I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Public Safety, Finance and Personnel Meeting of October 23rd, 2023 to order. I'll call the roll. Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman. Freeman is absent. Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee. McGee is absent. Mahal.
Here.
Porter. Porter is absent. Snow.
Here.
Seven present. Mayor Morris will not be here this evening. In the past, council has usually made a motion to appoint the longest-serving alderman to temporary chair of the meeting. Alderman Snow is the longest standing or serving alderman tonight. Can I get a motion for a temporary chair?
I'll make that motion.
And who would you like to appoint, Natalie?
Alderman Snow, please.
Can I get a second? Gramkowski. And I'll take roll on that. Albertini.
Yes.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Seven in favor. Motion carried.
First, we'll start off with public comment. Did we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to public forum. We have nothing. Reports of officers, boards and special committees under public safety and unfinished business, we have none. Moving on to public safety, new business, we have the update from the police department. Chief Woody.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Since last month, the police department's had the following events. Recruits Lara and Hauser, Week 10 of Sauk Valley Basic Academy. Probationary officers Ben O'Lechow and Vanegas are still in the FTO program. Fire and Police Commission voted unanimously to approve the rule changes, and now the changes will be posted for 10 days in the shopper and then take effect. Once that occurs, the police department, through the authority of the Fire and Police Commission, will have the ability to do digital testing and as well as written testing. And we anticipate it should make our entry-level testing process much more efficient. Lateral applicant Matthew Gibson passed his psychological and medical. Fire and Police Commission appointed him as a probationary police officer, and his swearing end date is November 3rd at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall. We currently have three officers who are on long-term medical, five in various stages of basic training, and one lateral candidate to be hired to fill the vacancy of Officer Hernandez. Currently, we have 10 officers who we have to cover on patrol. K-9 Solo cracked a tooth while training, which required it to have a root canal and crown. We looked at various options such as pulling the tooth, which was considerably less money. But according to three different vet dentists, including UW Madison, pulling the tooth would cause undue stress on the surrounding teeth, a bite shift, as well as compromising the integrity of the jaw. Ultimately, we got three different quotes from three different vets in the area. UW Madison estimated a cost of $2,500 to $3,500. Veterinary Dental Center in Aurora was $4,100 to $4,200. And Animal Care Center of Barrington was $5,000 to $6,000. We opted to have the work done at UW Madison Veterinary Clinic. We've used them several times in the past, as well as, you know, they were the cheapest option. Excuse me. There will be a three-week recovery. The dentist will periodically monitor the tooth due to the nature of aggression training. But we anticipate K-9 Solo will have a full function of his tooth. We also have this amount budgeted in the K-9 budget line item. The police department is also applying for a grant through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board for $14,800 to pay for the two squad car cameras that we have already purchased, as well as $10,800 for storage servers for video, to store video from body worn cameras and squad car cameras. That concludes my update, and I will entertain any questions that the council may have.
I guess I have a question, chief. The broken tooth, how did that occur? Or just happened eating food or under training or incident?
Yeah, it was during training through bite and aggression training. It's not necessarily uncommon. We've had it with other canines in the past.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So the police department, again, the AAIM award presentation.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and come up to the podium. Also, I have Art Crenzer as a representative from AIM here as well to present the awards and provide some information to you. As I explained, I have Art Crenzer, a representative from AIM. His wife Kelly Crenzer, who also is with AIM, has been here before you, previous years, to present these awards. I asked them to come to share their story because I think it's good to provide the perspective from a victim's standpoint and just help remind us all why it's important to conduct DUI enforcement as we celebrate these officers who've been recognized by AIM. Behind me, we have Officer Joe Danielak and Officer Corn, who will be recognized here tonight. Officer McDermott also will be receiving an award. He unfortunately couldn't be here because he was, he's in training currently in Southern Illinois. So having said that, I'd like to call Art.
Thank you, Chief Woody. Thank you, Belvidere, for having me here tonight. As you said, my name is Art Crenzer, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists to present these awards to the Belvidere Police Department in recognition of their DUI enforcement. I'm also here as a dad, one who has lost his son to an impaired driver, so this is really personal for me. My 20-year-old son, Christopher, was killed by an impaired driver in August of 2010. Chris was on his way to his grandmother's house late at night and was struck on the driver's side of his Honda Civic at the intersection of Perryville and Newburgh by a drunk driver that ran a red light at a speed between 93 and 104 miles an hour. Chris was hit on the driver's side of his Honda Civic, as I said, and it doesn't take much of an imagination to think of the damage. This was the offender's second DUI. We greatly appreciate the Belvidere's efforts to remove impaired drivers from our streets, the ones that we all drive on. A lot of little kids here tonight. These are the kids that are out playing, and, you know, you never know who's coming down the street. You never know what they've been up to, and it's people like you guys that make a difference. And I know it's a thankless task because people are belligerent to you, they're abusive to you, they think you're, a worse word than a jerk, but, you know, they're not happy about it. And to us, it's personal. The only difference between a basic DUI, I can't speak, the only difference between a basic DUI arrest and a DUI fatality arrest is time. Every DUI arrest made is a potential death notification that doesn't have to happen. Someone that won't get a phone call to come to the hospital right away, only to be told that your son is dead. My son went to Belvidere High School, graduated 2008, and now he's buried in a Belvidere cemetery. He's still here, but it's not the same. So I want to thank you all for your time, and my hat's off to all these officers and their efforts. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
The first award that I will ask Art to present is to Officer Joe Danielak for his DUI enforcement efforts in 2022. Officer Danielak, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next two, I'll have Mr. Crenzer issue to Officer Matt Corn for his DUI efforts where he's recognized by AIM for not only 2022 but also 2023. In addition to that, I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, remember that me telling you that Officer Corn was also recognized by MAD this year for his efforts in DUI enforcement as well. These officers are just a couple of representatives of the hard work that the Belvidere Police Department does on a daily basis. And in this time where the focus or emphasis seems to be on making things more fair for the criminal and those who drive under the influence because they want to make things fair, I just have one question to them. How is this fair? How is it fair to those who have to wake up day after day realizing that their loved one has been literally murdered because somebody decided to drink and then drive? To me, that's not fair. So, again, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate all of the work that these two officers have done, but all of the officers for the Belvidere Police Department. Thank you. I might as well stay up there, actually.
Next on the agenda is recognition of Nancy Davis, successful completion of probation.
So it's become tradition that the Belvidere Police Department recognizes all of their officers who successfully complete the probationary period. So tonight, I would like to introduce you to the, to next year's AIM recipient, Matthew Davis.
Hopefully so.
Yes. What we do when an officer is hired on our department in a probationary status is essentially Deputy Chief Wallace rummages through a drawer and finds any old badge that is laying there, and we say, here you go. You're the police, go out there and enforce the laws. But after the probationary period, we like to bring them before the council and let all of you see not only the name but the face. And it gives me the opportunity to officially and formally congratulate Officer Davis for completing the probationary period. And he is now a full-fledged police officer with his full-fledged badge number on his badge for number 423. I told him he didn't have to, but he insisted on saying a few words, so.
That is not true. Well, I want to thank the city of Belvidere for allowing me to be here and progress through my career and letting me get to this point also. Really like to appreciate my wife for, who's not here unfortunately because she had some work issues that she had to be at, so, but she has loved my life. I'm glad that she proceeds to push me through and help me throughout my career, you know, is always there. Thank you, chief, for allowing me to speak here today.
My pleasure, my pleasure. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Next on the agenda is the, looks like the Brink Lemur 2 drone, so I guess Police Chief is going to be heading us up on that as well?
If you could turn to the memo reference, approve the purchase of a Brink Lemur 2 drone. On your desk is an updated price quote with an expiration date of November 30th, 2023. Price didn't change, just the expiration because the previous one that I had showed an expiration of June, I believe. So we did get an updated quote just to make sure that none of the prices had changed to this point, which according to that, it appears it had not. Belvidere Police Department is requesting the purchase of a Brink Lemur 2 drone. Drone has capabilities that will give our crisis negotiations team the ability to communicate with suspects and victims through two-way communications. Our SWAT team can utilize glass breakage tools to gain access through windows, gather intelligent inside hostile environments without moving from a position to cover. And Command can watch the video remotely and gather real-time intelligence, which will aid in plan and strategy development, which can minimize liability exposure. Given the wide availability of recreational and commercial drones, the public expects SWAT teams to use drones during an operation to limit those situations requiring force on force. This drone transcends SWAT and even law enforcement application, has applications that can assist in hazmat operations, search and rescue, defense, fire protection, and even public works. Drone not only provides night vision but thermal imagery, which detects heat signatures, it's able to turn itself upright, carry a one-pound payload, has over an hour flight time and 20 hours perch time with the operations kit. Total cost of the Brink Lemur 2 drone is $23,197, which includes the Lemur 2 drone, two aircraft batteries, accessory kit, Lemur 2 flight training, and data and streaming package. In order to maintain the ability for Command to view the video remotely, there would be a yearly cost of $4,999, which is included in the initial purchase price. Otherwise, the video would only be viewable by the flight operator. I would request the motion to approve the purchase of a Brink Lemur 2 drone package at a cost of $23,197 to be taken from the capital fund line item.
All right. We would entertain a motion to that effect. Alderman Albertini, a second. By the woman, Mahal. Any discussions or, and I assume we're going to dig at a dog and pony by the looks of it?
You ready?
Control, SWAT 1 is live out. Control, SWAT's arrived. We got the inner perimeter. Containment is set. I need eyes out. Is Lemur ready? The county units, this is SWAT Lemur going to be launching from the one-side barricade. CP copies. Patrol Lemur, hold on the two-side. This is SWAT Lemur. One side is cleared. I'm going to be moving to the four-side. CP copies. Patrol Lemur, hold us on the two-side. Find us a breach point. We've got a breach or one door. Clear for breach. SWAT Lemur, on our breach. I'm going to be switching to night vision. I'm in the hallway. Is it good to enter? CP copies. Shoot us some F as you clear. CNT is tending by for two weeks homes. SWAT Lemur, I've got contact. Two-side. Give me a white mail, black t-shirt with a gun. I'm done. SWAT Lemur, I'm up. I'm going to re-enter. This is the lead with the police. You can see we're not going anywhere. We're here to help. Keep that thing away from us. The drone can hurt you. I'm ready for you to walk out the front door on our, but we'll figure it out so nobody gets hurt, all right? This is the bridge, Lemur 2. Built to go in first and establish communication, helping everyone get home safely. Welcome to the future of public safety. Call your doorbell camera.
All right. That was impressive. Question for you. It talked about weather resistant, but how much wind would be an issue for it not to be able to function correctly?
How much wind? I couldn't tell you specifically how many knots, you know, wind gusts would have to be before it would affect operability, but I do know it does play a part based off of experiences that we've had in the past with other drones. So weather would play a part, and depending on how significant, it could potentially make the drone inoperable.
And if I understand right, the county has their own drone, correct?
They have several.
And so would this be able to be used in conjunction with them and their, because the SWAT team is, consists of both jurisdictions, does it not?
It does. The SWAT team, even though we have individuals from both departments, ultimately it is the police department SWAT team that the county is members of. And in terms of the county having their own drones, they have a drone specifically for accident reconstruction, which has, you know, special cameras and software that allow them to navigate that environment. Then they have some of your more maybe lower-end commercial drones that are a little less rugged, maybe a little less durable. But ultimately, this drone specifically would be for the SWAT team. It has specifications and compatibilities that would be specific for SWAT environments such as the glass breakage. Nobody in this area, to my knowledge, has a drone that has a capability of making entry into a residence when there are no either open doors or windows. This would provide us with that flexibility, ultimately something that we would then have, make accessible to other jurisdictions if they needed it. So it wouldn't be, instead of using the county, either Boone or Winnebago counties drones, it would be in addition to. Then it would allow us the flexibility to operate and maintain our own drone if for some reason, you know, the county, either county, Winnebago or Boone, wasn't available. And if for some reason their operators aren't available, they could utilize us like we have them in the past.
And how many operators will you have as far as people trained? Everybody on the SWAT team or other people that aren't necessarily on the SWAT team to be able to use it?
At least initially, it would be SWAT operators. The training that comes with the package price of $23,197 is up to three operators.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Alderman Albertini.
Thank you, Dan. I have a question. My concern is, I noticed how it got damaged by the assailants. My question is, are we going to insure these in case somebody shoots one out of the air?
Yeah, the city would provide the insurance for it, but if you noticed in the price quote, there are additional, it's an accessory kit and spare parts kit that come with it. So there are additional parts that do come in case something does get damaged. But the city would insure it as well as part of normal operating procedure.
I would just assume that a shotgun blast would total it, so parts wouldn't help. That's why I'm asking, would it be replaced by insurance? So as long as it's being insured, because it is a costly item, so.
It is very costly, but the intelligence that we gather by somebody shooting it out of the air with the shotgun blast potentially not only could save a life but could save the city far more than, you know, the $23,000 price tag by not requiring, you know, a human asset to go into that environment and now allows us to maybe come up with alternative methods of dealing with that same situation.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to know about it. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. And I guess the other thing is, as it's taken video or analyzed in somebody's house, all that, I assume, becomes confidential information to some extent, attorney Drilla? Or haven't broached that?
It depends. Not a lot of things. It'd be a case-by-case analysis.
Typical lawyer. Any other questions from Alderman? Yes, Gramkowski.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Chief, how long is the flight training? Is it weeks? How long does that take for your officers?
No, it would be a four-hour flight training done virtually, and then there would be additional training that some of our officers have already had that is administered by the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police regarding state laws and what the state and federal requirements are surrounding drones and law enforcement use.
Alderman Flurry.
Thank you. And once the three officers are trained, do they have the ability to train others or do you have to pay for additional training?
They could show other officers how to utilize the drone, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman Frank.
In the case that it was damaged or inoperable, would that be a charge that we could charge the criminal for, to pay for it? Like restitution sort of?
Absolutely, and we could charge them for criminal damage of state-supported property, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Good question. Any other questions? That being said, will, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It'll move forward. And now we're looking at the police department grant agreement between IDOT and the city of Belvidere.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. In your packet, you'll find a grant agreement number HS240069 between the State of Illinois, Illinois Department of Transportation, and the city of Belvidere. The Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program, or STEP, grant is designed to increase highway safety through the reduction of motor vehicle crashes, fatalities and injuries, increased proper use of document protection devices, and reduced impaired driving. The program accomplishes these goals by implementing strategies such as enforcement, training, outreach and education. Mandatory enforcement campaigns occur on Thanksgiving. Mandatory enforcement campaigns occur on Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, St. Patrick's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. These campaigns concentrate on impaired driving and/or occupant protection, but also target contributory causes of crashes such as speeding, electronic device use, failure to yield, disobeying traffic control device or signals. Officers are hired back at an overtime rate, and the city has reimbursed 100% for the total hours worked by all officers for each campaign through allowable grant funds. IDOT has approved $29,850 in grant funding for the city of Belvidere for FY24 STEP grant program. I would request a motion to approve the grant agreement between the state of Illinois, Illinois Department of Transportation, and city of Belvidere for FY24, and accept $29,850 in grant funding for traffic enforcement.
Alright, we have a motion by Alderwoman Mohol, second by Albertini. Any further questions? I guess, so is that our FY24 timeframe? So we have roughly six or nine months worth of use of this money?
No, it would be the state's FY24, so I believe theirs runs from October to October.
Okay, so we have a whole year to use that. And any other questions? Yep, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll move on to the fire department, update by Lieutenant Thornton.
Good evening, council. The fire department, the past 30 days has done 310 calls for service, or about 10.3 per shift, 222 of them have been EMS, the rest have been various other calls for service. It includes two building fires and one cooking fire also. For aid given, we've given aid 17 times, 11 received, five given, 17 total count of aid. We've had nine CPR given, three of those have had the return of spontaneous circulation. Transportation destinations, we've had about 6.4 transports per shift, going to various hospitals, 193 total. For news, we now have a Lucas device on both our ambulances, that's the automatic CPR machine, so both our ambulances have that, it greatly increases the life expectancy of somebody if we get return of circulation by doing continuous CPR. Fire prevention month is ongoing, it's going well, we had our open house back on the 8th, and some other various things in the schools and the daycares around town. Firefighter Jankowski, probationary firefighter, has passed his three month and is doing really well. Probationary firefighter Herrera has completed his orientation, he's doing well and he's on shift now, black shift. General Mills is providing us with a one day hazmat refresher with their hazmat team. Dairy Queen is hosting the fire department on Tuesday, the 24th, from 4 to 7. They'll be allowing us to hand out fire prevention material, and they'll be donating 30% of the gross sales during that time to the fire department for fire prevention. React helicopter came, provided landing zone training, I'm sure half the town heard the helicopter come in that night. And Medicare EDI is not approved yet, and that's all I have for the update.
Okay, any questions for lieutenant? Go ahead, Ms. Mohol.
The Medicare EDI is that for ambulance services, alright.
My note says to refer that to Shannon, if you have any questions.
We've been waiting very impatiently for approval, but once that hits, then they should be able to run all those claims that have been sitting there through, once we do get approved.
Do we have an idea of how long that might be?
That we do not, I think we expected it by now.
Okay, I know our collections are dismal right now.
Okay. Alright, any further questions for the lieutenant? If not, we'll move on to G, the vial of life donation.
Okay, council, in front of you, you'll see a memo from Chief Shadle, kind of explaining what the vial of life is, I'm sure you've all had a chance to read that, but what it is, is the magnet that we hang on the fridge of our senior homes, and inside the pouch on the magnet is some information about their medical history. So when we respond to the seniors' home or these high-rise facilities, we go right to that fridge to get their medical information. That way, the officer can start writing it down, we need to know what we need to know, and it's right there for us. This program started long before I started, many years ago, and it's, we don't have anymore, and it's kind of not in the houses anymore, we're not finding them, our senior homes have all kind of cycled through now, it's new people and they don't have them. So we're looking at getting this program back up and running. The funds for that, Metro Ambulance Services has agreed to donate the initial cost of buying 1,000 of those, and then the first 1,000 would get distributed to our high-rise facilities and our senior facilities that are densely populated. Our rigs, we'd each have some of them on them, so if we came across a house that needed one, we would have them. The rest would go to the Keenage Center, and the Keenage Center would distribute it to the seniors as they come and go, they would help them fill it out. The Keenage Center's participation is doing that, and they're also printing the inside pamphlet. The one that comes in, it's really small writing, you can't see anything, there's no room to write, so we designed a new one that they'd be printing up and putting it inside there. So we are requesting a motion to accept donation from Metro Paramedic Services in the amount of $1,740 to be used for the purchase of the vials for life.
Alright, I get a motion, Alderman Albertini, second by Alderwoman Frank. Any questions, comments? And I guess I would say that I think I still have something on my refrigerator from previous, so I think it's a good program to, for you guys to be able to readily access and have the information that might be more useful. Alderman Albertini.
I have a quick question. These aren't obviously ready now, would we be notified when they're available to the seniors?
Yes, so once we get approval and we get the check, we'll get them ordered up, it'll only take a couple of weeks to get here, and I'm sure Chief Shadle will let everybody know when that's available, and it'll also be on our website, also our Facebook page.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So presumably that next week is our council approval, and then a couple of weeks after that, okay, excellent. Alright, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those in opposed? Motion carries. On number three, finance personnel unfinished business, we have none. Number four, finance and personnel new business, we have the finance department update. Director Shannon.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Two quick updates, you may have noticed over the past couple of months, movement with the city's CDs, which are our reserve funds. For the past few years, they've simply rolled over at maturity due to low rates and lack of interest by business institutions for new money. Fortunately for our investments, banks are actively seeking new money now, and rates are competitive. As a result, we've moved two CDs from Byron Bank to Stillman Bank, recognizing a 1% increase in interest rates, and as CDs mature, we will continue to seek the best rates for the city's investments. And then the last update I have is, for the first time in over three years, DCEO held its Community Development Block Grant Application Workshop last week in Springfield. This two-day workshop was attended by municipalities, environmental firms, and contractors, covered economic development, public infrastructure, and rebuild Illinois components, as a requirement of our grant agreements, and allows the city to act as grant administrator.
Great, thank you. Alright, any questions for the director? Nope, alright, we'll go to B, Schicklett's LLP Audit Review. I assume we have somebody here for that.
Good evening, thank you, Alderman Snow. Thank you to members of city council for having me here tonight. My name is Nick Baba, I am a partner with Sikic LLP, and the partner that oversaw the city of Belvidere's audit as of April 30th, 2023. So ultimately, as part of that financial statement audit, we issue several deliverables that are in front of you tonight for your review and approval. I'll highlight some items out of the annual financial report, which is the audit report, but we'll be happy to answer any questions that there might be as part of this fiscal year audit. So of those, of those deliverables, as I mentioned, we issued the annual financial report, which is the audit document, and friendly reminder, the IDA Public Library is included as a discreetly presented component unit in the reporting entity. We also issue the communication with those charged with governance, the city council, that is a document that includes any audit adjustments, if there were any disagreements with management, there were none, any formal recommendations, things of that nature. So the thinner that document, the better. It does include information pertaining to the library as well, overall, as far as the city's concerned, good, you know, good news and results in that document. We also issue a management letter required by Illinois compiled statutes, that's to be posted on the city's website, one-page document, nothing, nothing of note in that particular deliverable. We issue a examination report on the city's two TIF districts, Tax Increment Financing districts, Kishawaki Number One and Kishawaki Number Two. We test compliance over expenditures for these TIF funds, property tax revenues, fund balance restrictions, things of that nature. We had an unmodified opinion on those reports, so good news on there. We also issued a single audit report this year, I'll cover that shortly, that's specifically tied to grant spending, and the last two deliverables are, one related to the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, that is a grant reporting deliverable, and then we also assisted with the annual financial report required by the Illinois Comp Trollers website. So fair share of deliverables is part of an annual audit, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but for the, for the annual financial report, the large document, if it is in front of you and you're interested in following along, I'll just highlight the independent auditor's report, that begins on page number one of the hard copy, it's, it has Sikic's letterhead up at the top. This is our opinion on the financial statements, and right there, front and center is the opinion section, it does document that we issued what we call an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion, and it's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide the city as part of an annual audit. So good news on that end, financial statements are free of material statements, the report card you want to have as part of an annual audit. On page four of the independent auditor's report, so a few pages ahead, the last paragraph is titled "Other Reporting Required by Government Auditing Standards." So this makes the connection to the single audit report that I mentioned earlier. So a single audit is a required compliance document when a government spends greater than $750,000 in federal grant money. So in the case of fiscal year 2023, the city did eclipse that threshold specifically tied to the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Roughly $930,000 were spent on, of ARPA funds during the year. $600,000 was spent on the Southwest Tower Rehab Project, about $85,000 was on the primary clarifier upgrade project, and then $245,000 on the Pierce Sabre fire truck purchase. So that leaves about roughly 2.5 million unspent of American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and the requirements are for those funds to be obligated by December 31st of 2024, and then spent by December 31st of 2026. So plenty of time to spend and utilize those dollars as council and management sees fit. Overall, as part of the single audit, there are additional compliance tests required over these purchases. Pleased to report, we didn't have any issues of non-compliance or any findings associated with those, with those tests. So, you know, good news on compliance, especially when you're working with federal grant dollars. So that ultimately concludes the opinions that I'd like to cover and highlight today. I just would like to thank Shannon for her assistance throughout the process. The audit is a lengthy task, it begins roughly in March, from a pre-planning standpoint, and, you know, obviously goes all the way through the end of October. So governments are given six months from their fiscal year end to file and finish their audit, you are required extensions, it's not uncommon, but historically, we've been here in October presenting final reports to you all here tonight, which is a testament to management and the departments that we work with. So I just would, again, like to thank Shannon and all the folks that we worked with throughout the process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Alderwoman Mohol.
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, I don't remember, I don't know which one it's in, I am working off of my digital here, but I noticed that there were two categories, one being governmental and one being, I think it was labeled as business. Just to be clear, so anything that falls under the governmental activities, those are tax-based revenues, and then does everything else fall under the business-type activities?
Sure, so governmental activities encompasses what we refer to as governmental funds, so your general fund, motor fuel tax fund, capital projects funds, debt service funds. Generally, those funds are supported by property tax dollars, sales tax dollars, things of that nature. Your business-type activities are your utility funds, so your water and sewer utility that you provide, yeah, you provide those services to residents of the city, supported by, you know, fees charged to those residents. So that's really the primary differentiation between governmental and business-type activities.
Anybody else have anything? No? Great, I greatly appreciate you coming, and greatly appreciate you giving us a clean bill of health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hanson, you're asking for a motion to accept and approve the audit?
Yes.
Alright, we would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year ending April 30th of 2023 audit as presented by Schicklett, Alderman Albertini, second by Ms. Mohol. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And do we need anything else on that? Alright, next we'll go to C, the 2024 IML Risk Management Association Annual Report Renewal. Take care of that. Thank you? Okay. Alright. Ms. Hanson, can you take care of that, or no?
This is just our annual fees due for our insurance, and I think it's about a $10,000 increase over last year.
Alright, at that point, we would entertain a motion to approve the 2024 IML Risk Management Association Annual Renewal. Can I get a motion? Alderwoman Mohol, second by Alderwoman Grahamkowski. Any further discussions? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we go to purchase card policy. Ms. Hanson.
Thank you again. At the time the city moved to purchase cards, or credit cards, a policy was implemented relative to their use. As part of the city's continuous improvement to guard against fraud, ensure no sales taxes paid, and to enhance record-keeping standards, among other things, the policy has been revised to capture additional safeguards and procedures. Upon final draft and approval by council, each card holder will be provided a copy of the policy and asked to acknowledge its contents and the cards assigned. I recommend a motion to approve the amended City of Belvidere Purchase Card Policy and Procedures Manual as presented.
Can I get a motion to that effect? Alderman Albertini, second by Alderwoman Mohol. Any discussions? And curiosity, how many people do we have that hold cards, generically, I mean, 10, 20?
I will ballpark about 20 to 25.
Great, thank you. And do you pull them all in at once to have the discussion, or in small groups?
Small groups.
Thank you. Alright, since we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion at this point, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. And E, tax levy request. Ms. Hanson.
Thank you. We are in receipt of and attached the following tax levy requests. Belvidere firefighters pension fund, $1,414,121, which is an increase of $10231. Belvidere police pension fund, $1,901,669, which is an increase of $262,36. And the IDA Public Library for $812,100, which is an increase of $38,563. As council must approve a tax levy by the last Tuesday in December, this information is presented for your review in preparation of levy discussions in November.
So at this point, it's just informational, we don't need any motion?
Just informational, we'll come next month with additional information for the council to consider.
And I guess I do have a question, so in the world, I know the IDA Public Library has its own levy, but is the firefighter and police pension separate levies as they occur?
No, they're just, no, they're line items that we levy for.
Okay. So generically speaking, they come out of the general fund, okay, thank you. Alright, any other questions or comments at this point? Alright, now we'll move on to number five, other for public works, Sixth Street Flow Channel Bid Tabulation.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Memo in your packet, we opened up our bids for our Sixth Street Flow Channel project, we received six bids, low bid being from Martam Construction Incorporated. My current budget includes $300,000 in capital funds for this project, and we've also received a comm ed... a ComEd Green Region Program grant in the amount of $10,000 to also go towards this project. I would recommend approval of the low base bid from Martam Construction in the amount of $283,485.09 for the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel project. This work will be paid for from line item 0157518058.
Can I get a motion to that effect? Alderwoman Mohol, second by Alderman Albertini. And I guess I have a few questions on my end. The disparity in pricing, everybody, it just is what it is, huh? Okay. And the other is, when would this work actually tend to be accomplished or started?
Some of the work will probably start yet this fall. We are, there's a limited timeframe because of the endangered bat habitat that could be potential. There's some tree removals that have to be done within a certain time window, so that will probably be done yet this fall. So whatever works not finished, it can be finished up in the early spring and be within those time constraints.
And so does this have to be used up during our current fiscal year or is it going to carry over into next?
For whatever expenses would not be incurred prior to the end of the fiscal year, we would have to make sure that there's, funds budgeted in next year's capital fund to cover that.
Thank you. All right. We have a, we did get a motion, right? Yeah. So any other discussion questions? Alderman Fleury.
Thank you. So I know this always comes around inevitably there'll be some change orders. What's the percentage that's still within the kind of limit of a change order? So I mean, like if someone bid it, you know, for example, this bid was 100,000 less than others, and somewhere as high as 700,000. So a wide range there. So like I said, inevitably, there's going to be some change orders, but there's like, isn't there like a limit of, that was within the contract that is acceptable?
Well, as far as acceptance, or there's, I mean, typically, we try not to have any change orders, and the lower percentage, of course, the better. I think technically, from a legal standpoint, 49%?
50%.
49%? You could have a change order about, you could change a project up to 49% without changing, before they consider that a change in scope, and then you basically have to go out and rebid if you get above 49%.
I'm guessing what he's asking for is there a built-in contingency at this point that you're probably going to have the occasional upcharge for things that are unforeseen?
There's always contingency that's built in to a project cost, right? In this case, we've got $300,000 budget, and we're at 283, so that gives you your, what we've got room to play with, plus $10,000 on a grant, so.
Thank you.
I saw the hesitation Alderman Fleury's eyes when I mentioned that. That's actually a statute that requires in a public works project, if you exceed 49 or 50%, then you have to rebid the project. This council's never approved anything like that, so I can recall.
Well, the closest thing we came to was when we had the drilling project for the wastewater treatment plant project. That was the biggest issue.
Yeah, we ended up rebidding that.
And we did.
So we have a motion on the floor, and any further discussions or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is adjournment. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Albertini, second by Grahamkowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. Have a good night.